Well, welcome, welcome, welcome everyone to the District 47, 2022, 2023 Town Hall Meeting, our first in the 2022 calendar year. Hopefully, we have more of these in the near future. I am your District Director, Distinguished Toastmaster Austin Canonica, and I am going to be in a panel with our District Trio that will include our Program Quality Director, Distinguished Toastmaster Lois Margolin, and our Club Growth Director, Distinguished Toastmaster Verna Bonnaby. Our moderator and chat monitor is our District 47 Administration Manager Ernesto G. Williams, and he will be supporting us, making sure that we don't miss anything in the chat and that we're following through the proper order of whoever has raised their hand for questions or comments. What we will do to keep an organized flow at any point during this Town Hall, this is really meant to be a total open dialogue between the district and the members. Therefore, if you do have a question or a comment, you could post it in the chat at any time, or if you use the raise hand feature that is in the reaction section of Zoom at the very bottom. If you raise your hand like I am doing right now, you will be queued up, and then we will answer your question or hear your commentary in the order that you had replied. And again, this is open dialogue. We highly encourage you to ask us questions or make any comments that you have. Myself, Lois, and Verna will be here to answer questions. If you have a question that is specifically addressed toward one of us, just specify that. Otherwise, we will all answer to the very best of our ability. We have some comments and some updates as well, but it is nothing new that you have not already seen in our email communication that went out recently or is already published on our website or our social media, but we are here to expand upon any of those areas as well. I feel like I've already taken up too much time in this Town Hall with this introduction, but now that we have our ducks in a row and that we are all set, I would love to hear from anyone so we could really begin our comments and questions for the Town Hall. Questions and comments can range from really anything that's happening in this Toastmasters year. We could talk about training. We could talk about speech contests. We could talk about conference, in-person events, membership, club growth, really anything that the district is doing. I recognize Distinguished Toastmaster Betsy Robinson. Your hand is raised. Please, comments, questions, and we'll welcome you to the Town Hall.
Thank you, District Director Canonica. It's so great to see everybody, first off. And I know there's been a lot of changes this year, not only in our district, but through Toastmasters International. I'm curious, and I don't really want to call out people for not doing what I think they're supposed to be doing, but I haven't seen, I belong to three clubs in Area 30. I have yet to see an area director visit. I have emailed the area director the beginning of the year to say, hey, I did Area 30 last year. Do you want any heads up? The Division Director said, yeah, I'd be glad to help out. Didn't hear from him either. It's kind of really discouraging. It's already October. The term started in July. I know during my term, I had to have club visits in already. I did ask the other area, prior area directors from Division C last year, and it was the same response.
Betsy, thank you for making those comments and informing us of your lived experience so far. As the District Director, I take full responsibility for the Division Director not being as responsive as they should have been, and that trickles to the area director as well. The district did have our stretch goal of having 100% of our area director visit reports in by September 30th, and we did fall short of that goal in several of the areas. We had a secondary stretch goal of by October 14th, which would be by the end of this week, having 100% of the area director visits in place. But obviously, to your point, if you are, you're not hearing from your area director or the Division Director to this point, that needs to change. And I will ensure that the Division C Director is aware of your comment, and also the area director in Area 30 is aware of your comment. That way, we could turn that around right away. I also just want to thank you for being willing to offer your support to a fellow successor in your office or just showing their support in general. We greatly appreciate that. But I do apologize that it has been lackluster thus far, and it's my full intent to turn that around 180 degrees moving forward.
Thank you. I just want to add that one of the club presidents I know reached out to the area director and hasn't received a response either.
Thank you. That is noted, and I will make sure that I have a conversation with them.
Thank you.
I see Christian Pinder has their hand raised. Christian, thank you for raising your hand.
Thank you. Thank you for acknowledging me, Distinguished Toastmaster Canonica. I am raising my hand now because I have an issue in regards to the fact that members have to pay the Toastmasters International $45 every time they are part of multiple clubs. And you know, in the Bahamas, a number of persons enjoy being a part of a number of clubs. And I think that is a disservice because if you are signing up for Toastmasters International, you're getting the same, you're using the same email, same password, getting the same information. Now, I understand that you can, you should, you should pay the dues of the club because each individual club has its own bills to pay. However, I don't understand why is it that Toastmasters is requiring that person's pay $45 for each club that they want to be a part of. I don't think that it's fair, and I think that it's something that should be looked at and possibly changed. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that, Christian. We do have many dual members in District 47, which is wonderful, being a member of multiple clubs. As of right now, I don't anticipate Toastmasters International would change that policy because if a member is to submit educational awards for a particular club, for example, they would need to be a paid member of that club. I do understand your point, though, and I could understand for a member that is truly wanting to be a part of multiple clubs, how that could be a financial burden to actually actively join as a paid member for each club. But perhaps what could happen in the future is if a member wanted to actively participate in multiple clubs, they could still join in on club meetings, and when there are availabilities, participate either by speaking or by filling roles. However, unless you are a paid member of that club, you would not be able to submit educational goals for that particular club. But I will take this down as a note, and I will inform Toastmasters International and see if there's anything that they can do at the Board of Director level and take this into consideration. I do know that across the world, there are also many members across districts. There are also members of multiple clubs, and I'm sure that this is coming up with them as well. We've heard something even as interesting as if you were a member of X amount of clubs that you get like the, if you're a member of seven, you get the eighth free or something like that. But I have not heard of any actual traction from the world headquarters level, in which case this would happen. But I've taken down your note, and I will certainly mention it and escalate it beyond the district.
Thank you.
Kate, I see that you're unmuted, but I don't know if you had a question or you wanted to ask a question or make a comment.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I meant to.
That's okay. Good to talk to you. So we've had a question so far on lack of response from an area or division director wanting to get that connection, area director visit report, very much so noted. And also, we've talked about members that belong to multiple clubs, how that's burdensome to have to pay the individual dues for each and every club that a dual member is a part of. All very good questions and comments. I see in the chat, Dr. Susan Veneta, I saw an email that they started shipping Distinguished Toastmaster awards. This is correct. Recently, I want to say a week and a half ago, CEO of Toastmasters International, Daniel Rex, let, and a letter out that gave updates on the Enterprise Resource Program planning, that which is the main reason why our district, or I'm sorry, our Toastmasters International website, including the shop, has been down. However, they have indicated, despite the shop not being available, that they have started producing and shipping Distinguished Toastmaster awards. That would be the plaque with your name on it and the date of your achievement. Those, for those of you that have earned your Distinguished Toastmaster awards in this calendar year, in the Toastmasters 2022, 2023 year, you should be receiving that Distinguished Toastmaster plaque in the mail relatively soon. So yes. I see that Betsy also posted in the chat, is the store postponed? So this, they're, they're related. Well, that's one of the reasons why the DTM plaques to this point have not been shipped out, but CEO Daniel Rex indicated by the third week of October, the Toastmasters International shop should be back in full force. We, as district leaders, unfortunately, do not know if it will look exactly like it did before. We don't know if some of the items are going to be gone, changing prices. There are new items. Honestly, we don't know, and we wish that we did. I guarantee you that as soon as the shop becomes live for the first time, we will all be with tenterhooks going on that website. I see Nancy Abello has her hand raised. Welcome to the Town Hall, and please comment her question.
Yes, thank you, District Director. I have a question. Everybody knew, well, not everybody, many people knew that I had won the triple award, and I was the last to know. However, I never received the triple award. And because I belong to, to other countries, Toastmasters, I don't know if I won it from this country or from another country. Who should I talk to?
I'm sorry, Nancy. I, I don't believe I understood your question. Is it regarding a triple crown award for three achievements in the calendar year?
Yes, I was told that. However, I don't know from which, if it was from District 47 or another Toastmasters from another country.
Great question. District 47, the past several years, including this year, will be adhering to the triple crown incentive. It is an official triple crown pin that you used to be able to view on the website and their shop, and you will be able to again soon for any member that has earned three or more educational award achievements in a given Toastmasters year. If you did achieve three in District 47 last year, you will receive a triple crown pin. We would have given it out by now if the shop was open and we were able to hold our Hall of Fame ceremony commemorating the 2021, 2022 members, clubs, and leaders that received incentives. However, we are not able to plan adequately for that event yet because the shop is closed and because of some restrictions with venues and such. So to answer your question, if you achieved three or more goals last year, and I will verify that after this meeting, if you did, you will receive the triple crown pin, and we would give it out during that Hall of Fame ceremony, and we invite you to attend to be recognized and to receive it. If you had received the triple crown awards in another district, I don't necessarily know if they are doing a similar incentive. Therefore, if you did achieve those awards and submitted them to clubs not in District 47, the triple crown incentive for our district wouldn't count toward that. I wouldn't even know that you achieved the awards in another district, for example.
Yeah, well, that's my question. How can I know? Because.
So whichever clubs you submitted the awards for, that's how you would know. So when you submitted the awards, which club got the credit for them? If they were within District 47 and you did three or more, you get the triple crown incentive, which is the pin. You still get a triple crown award either way, but our incentive is for members within District 47 that submitted those goals in the district. You would earn that triple crown. So we could verify because there are reports on toastmasters.org. In the Distinguished Performance Reports section, there is a daily reports area that describes triple crown winners. Therefore, it will be relatively easy to look up your membership and see if you earned that award.
Right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I saw that there was a question regarding TLI dates, and our Program Quality Director Lois Margolin has answered the dates for the upcoming TLIs. So thank you so much for the question, Betsy, and thank you so much, Lois, for the reply. Kate McClair, you have been recognized. Please comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. District Director. My question is about the trainings. Can someone explain what advanced club officer training is? How is it different from, from the regular training?
That is an excellent question, Toastmaster McClair, and we're excited about this one. Lois, would you like to answer this one?
I would. Thank you. This is something that we're trying that's a little bit different. If you have been in an officer, the same officer position at least three times, we're trying to offer you something a little bit different than if you're the president, you set the tone. For instance, the president will go over Robert's rules, will be going over conflict resolution. The VPE is going to be going over how to do pivot tables with your pathways information and also the mentoring program. So each section is going to go a little more in-depth with different tools because you've already seen these tools three to six times if you've been that officer. Anyone can attend the advanced training, but only if you have received or you've been in that position more than three times, would you get credit, and it's an on-your-honor.
Does that answer? Doesn't have to be, yes, it doesn't have to be consecutive terms, right? Just any three terms. Okay. Yes, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great question. Thank you for the reply, Lois. Yes, this is actually something that we went to the Toastmasters International Convention, and we received training as a trio. This is one of those best practices or cool ideas that we learned about. And it also has to do with receiving feedback from our officers over, over several training periods. Some of our officers who have been in these roles that have been very experienced, they've been requesting, can we get a little bit more? They're very used to the training, and of course, we need to adhere to the official materials as much as possible from Toastmasters International. Therefore, this really provides an extra opportunity for our experienced members to take that training a little bit further, and we'll still provide the classic training for our newer or first-time officers, which really sets the foundation. But we're very excited to provide this and receive feedback from our members and from our officers. And if this is something that's successful and it's popular, it's something that we would certainly plan for every training period in the future. If it, if it turns out to be something that the members say they benefited from, and that's certainly what we're going to aim toward. We have lots of attendees here. I don't see any raised hands right now, but for those of you that may have just joined or tuning in, if you do have a comment or question for the District Trio, you may raise your hand or unmute yourself and ask. We've also had great questions being posted in the chat. You could ask the question there, and our Administrative Manager Ernesto Williams will assist with that. So in case anything gets, and gets buried.
Kiki has a question.
Vicky? Thank you, Christine.
Kiki, Christina, yes.
Christina, okay. Please, yes, thank you.
Hi, hi. Good evening. Thank you for having this Town Hall. So back to the training a little bit. So on the 5th of December, it's only advanced training. And on the 12th of December, it's only a midday training. And on the 14th of January, it's maybe a virtual training, which I believe that anybody can attend, no matter where they live. They don't have to be an FRI. But if it's not a virtual, so if someone is a first-time officer and they can't attend during the day, the first time that they can attend a training is January 29. I just want to make sure that I understand correctly. Lois, you look like you want to answer.
I do. So we do have other trainings, but not necessarily virtual. So we had originally set up that we were going to have, let's see, we are going to have two more on, in November. So that is on the 12th and the 19th of November. So those two are in person. The question was specifically the virtual ones, but we're still trying to get back to the in-person ones.
So we're, sorry then, if I may follow up?
Yes, ma'am.
So we are, will be getting, I assume then, very, very shortly, a full schedule of all opportunities for training this winter season? Awesome. Coming out to everybody soon?
I apologize. What was the question?
When are we getting the full schedule of all the TLI training opportunities, whether they are virtual or in-person?
Great question. So last week, I believe it was Thursday, I had sent out the calendar for everyone in a PDF form that does include the list. I missed one extra training opportunity that is going to be conducted on January 29th. It is going to be another virtual club officer training. Therefore, right now in the works, we have five officer training planned, including three TLIs and the one advanced training. In the email that was sent out, there was also a member interest survey because we are planning to have two in-person TLIs on in November. However, if there was not great interest from members to conduct them in person, there was consideration of making one of those November trainings virtual if there was not enough interest to justify putting on an in-person event. Through that survey, though, there was not a significant number of responses, less than 50, and there were about 30 persons that indicated of the near 50 that indicated they wanted in person. And it was kind of split between those two venues. So we're still planning for in-person because we've heard of the great desire from our members to get back in person. However, that survey also revealed that some members are only going to attend virtually from now on, especially those that live hours away from the venues that are in person. So it seemed fairly split between the desire for virtual and in-person. And we do take into account that if we do the in-person events in November, it really only provides the virtual opportunities for the second half of the year that would be in January. So right now, we are still planning, though, to do those in-person events based on the desires of the members. But there is still a possibility that we don't do both of those in November, and one of those becomes a virtual officer training. But noted that it would take until January for those that are 100% online to get trained. That is, that's an important thing to note, and we'll take that into consideration.
Awesome. So you were referring to the email that you were sending out, the one you sent on October 6th that came from a message from District 47 Directors, that the one we are referring to?
Correct. And there, there was a PDF, front and back page of all district events, and it listed the TLIs and the club officer trainings, including if they were going to be intended to be in-person or virtual.
All right. I don't see any other hands, so I'm still going to ask one more question.
Perfect. Yeah, I was just also going to add that that is being added to our District 47 website as well, and all links to be able to actually register and join into those virtual events will also be part of that calendar. So.
Excellent, because it's been a little bear. Now, in the old days, and you all or most of you know, I'm just an old has-been. Training did start in December. So if you're holding training sessions in November, would they be legal, so to speak, and count to as actual training, since training don't usually start until December, and it's December, January, and February?
Yes, the training period in the District Leadership Handbook says that you could begin training as early as November for the winter period. Therefore, trainings that we conduct in November would count toward the second half of the year. Yes.
Love progress. Thank you. I should be finished now.
Thank you for the questions, and thank you for being here, Christine. If you have any more, please. Ernesto has informed me, we have several in the chat right now, so I'm going to go to the chat. But if anyone has, wants to unmute and actually ask a question, you just use the raised hand feature, please, and we will call upon you. The first one is asking, how do I get signed up for trainings? How could everyone really look out for that type of information? Several ways that you could receive the invitation to actually register for training. They will always be emailed to you, and they will always be put on our District 47 website. Like Distinguished Toastmaster Kilburg stated, the website still needs a lot of updating, and that is my responsibility with the web team to make sure that that gets done as soon as possible. But I could assure you, we are working to get all of that information on there. The goal is going to be to get not only the calendar on there in full, but also to get it to be a calendar you could subscribe to, which that would integrate into your own calendar, including updates for specific events. So if you were to, for example, subscribe to our calendar, you'd have all of the events populated on your calendar, including the Zoom links to join into those events. So keep an eye out for our district website, but we will always email links for registering for any of our district events via email. We will send it to the email that you have on file with Toastmasters International. That is how we are able to access your email addresses. And therefore, if you're not looking at that email, or perhaps check your junk or spam folder, because sometimes if emails go out with a lot of imagery in them, for example, your computer may think, your email box may think that it's suspicious, and it may put it into junk or spam. So if you're like, I never get any emails from the district, try to check there just in case. But also, please refer to the email address that you log into toastmasters.org with. That is the email address that we have on file for your official member profile. We'll also post on social media as well. So between social media, our website, and emails, that's how you could find out about any of our events. And we are encouraging all of our division and area directors when making contact with their clubs to reiterate any of these events. That way, members know what's going on, and they could register for them and attend them freely. Next question I see is, how do we conduct speech crafts while the online store is closed? That is a great question. Fortunately, the speech craft is something that is done through the Pathways Portal now. I see Lois has her hand up, so we can let Lois take this one.
Well, actually, I'm scrolling back one to the last question.
Please, and then I'll come back to the speech.
Emails are going to be based on what you're registered on, but please make sure that you haven't opted out of the email program because we want to make sure that everybody's getting our emails. And if you accidentally opted out, you need to make sure that you say it's okay for me to get emails. So if you're not seeing your emails and you look in your spam and everywhere else, contact us, and let's make sure that you've got it set so that you'll receive emails from us. And did you want me to take the speech craft? You got speech.
Great point. Yes. So the speech craft is now done through Pathways, and I am under the impression that you can still conduct speech crafts even though the shop has been down. So you'd still be able to access a speech craft and pay for it through the Pathways Portal because that is where it is actually housed. I know that at one point you were, when the shop was still available, you were still able to purchase it through the shop. However, the speech craft is no longer a physical manual with physical workbooks. It is all integrated and embedded directly into Pathways as of right now. Therefore, there should not be any inability for a member to actually purchase and, and conduct a speech craft at this time. The next question I see is, will there be any additional Base Camp Manager training session scheduled? Then our Program Quality Director has answered that in the chat. We are planning on having additional Base Camp Manager training sessions. We're viewing the schedule now, and this is very needs-based. So thank you for letting us know. It's something you're interested in. We want to provide education and training for the needs and the wants of the district. Another question. With regard to the comment question earlier about TI dues for dual or more members, I think I remember that the member used to get a discount for a second club. Is this no longer available? Diane, thank you for the comment. I have never heard of such a thing. I don't, I do not know of any sort of a discount if you were a member of X amount of clubs. To my knowledge, it has always been a respective $45 for the six months directly to Toastmasters National for that specific club, and each club could have additional fees associated with the membership of being a part of that club. But I have never heard of an instance where a member receives any form of a discount for being a member of multiple clubs. To my knowledge, it has always been a respective $7.50 a month per club that you're a part of. Looking through. We had a question about club growth, Verna, that I see that you answered in there about application to organize a newly chartered club. Yes, that information can be submitted. We would love to facilitate that as well. So if we're talking club growth, please let our Club Growth Director, Distinguished Toastmaster Verna Bonnaby know, and our Club Extension Team will definitely, and our Division Directors will definitely work to cultivate these clubs. We are technically at the top of the hour, but I still see a lot of members in this, in this Town Hall meeting, which is great. And I know that the trio had discussed earlier that as long as we have questions and comments coming in from members, we're not going to cut the, the Town Hall short. So as long as you have anything that you'd like to say or ask, this is the perfect opportunity to do so. But I did want to note that it is now officially eight o'clock. And so I don't see any comments or questions or hands raised. So this, there we go, Roxanne, is what we're looking for.
There's always that one person who saves it till the end. It's just having to do with the youth, the youth leadership program. Is it the same as for the speech craft that that's also Pathways now and?
That's an excellent question, Roxanne. It is the intent to, for having the youth leadership programs move to the Pathways Portal, just like speech craft, and just like we have seen the club coach assignments happen within Pathways. However, that has not officially happened yet. Youth leadership programs are still conducted in the traditional way. I do understand that anyone that's been looking to conduct them recently has not been able to buy the manuals and the workbooks on the shop. Therefore, I know that that may have inhibited several youth leadership programs from being underway. But as of right now, unless with the shop, this change has also been part of it, and I don't know about it yet, we don't know about it yet, the youth leadership programs are still conducted the traditional way with those manuals, with those participation workbooks. And you would basically be alerting Toastmasters International that you've completed a youth leadership program in your distinguished Toastmaster application. We do anticipate that will change like speech craft has, but as of right now, it has not. So it's still the, the way it's always been, so to speak.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Austin, I had a question that was directed, but is actually for anyone. How does one become a distinguished Toastmaster? Fabulous question. There are a lot of boxes that need to be ticked and tied. We do have a team or two conference chairs or DTM chairs that are amazing. Please write to dtm@toastmastersd47.org and ask your question. They will be happy to schedule some time with you to go over what your education is today and what you need to do to complete your responsibilities to become a distinguished Toastmaster. So I will put their email again in the chat, but I'm so excited that y'all are asking that question.
Thank you so much, Lois. I appreciate you mentioning that, and I also posted, yeah, and Verna. Please go ahead. I just posted the link of how to become a DTM in the chat as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. District Director and PQD. And to those persons who are wondering, who have that question, I would just like to say that this year, and hopefully it will continue going forward, those persons who become club coaches and who successfully get those coaches to charter strength, those clubs, 20 members, they will, in addition to receiving the club coach credit, which is a requirement for DTM, if they successfully get that club to charter strength, they will also receive as a bonus the one-year district service. the one-year district service. That is also required to become a distinguished Toastmaster. So I encourage those of you help that club and help yourself achieve your goal as well. So please apply to become a club coach today. And may I say, the PR isn't here. But those of you who are not members of your division Facebook groups, each division has an official Facebook group. Please join your division Facebook groups. Join the division, the District Forty Seven Facebook groups, because all the flyers are shared, all the information is shared. We will repost them again, letting you know how you can apply to become a club coach. The program has changed a bit from last year. There is now an online, don't think that little training that you need to complete. You have to do monthly submissions to T I online, so it's a really involved process. But at those clubs, those persons who will be members of clubs that need help, please reach out and ask for a club coach. There's nothing wrong with having an experienced Toastmaster. Help you to get yourself back to where you need to be. No need to say, oh, I don't need a coach. There's nothing wrong with having a club coach. So please, it's only together that we can achieve our goals. So I encourage you all to apply.
Thank you, Verna. We see, I see Dominic, Christina, and Roxanne have their hands raised, but on that subject, several questions have been asked about how do I become a club coach? So just if you could briefly describe, I'm interested to be a club coach. What do I do? Who do I contact?
Okay, I will drop the file in here, but who your contact you can reach, let me type their emails first. I will type the emails in. But D T M Price Colomnes and D T M, I, Keisha Betterby. But I will drop the flyers. I will drop the flyers into the groups for you before we leave. And again, just follow your division, join your division Facebook groups. The flyers are in there, in the district, and we will post them in again. So you can see them. The club coach requests have started to come in slowly. They're picking up, but when that dashboard refreshes on Friday, there will be more clubs that need coaches, so I'm gonna give that information to you so you can go and have that training done. T I will not approve your request to be a cup coach unless that online training has been completed. We won't know if you've done it, but T I will know. Okay.
Thank you, Verna. So we do have uh, member retention chairs, club retention chairs that would be willing to help out with that, and Verna is going to post the information for there. But in general, you would identify to us, this is a club that I'd like to work with. We'll make sure that it's the right fit, make sure that you're trained, and as long as everyone's happy and and ready on board with that as a plan, we can make the appointment and then follow up with all the the necessary steps. But first step is you being interested in coaching and and us identifying and pairing you with a club that is actually in need of a coach. All right, now I see several in the chat, but let's go ahead with the hands raised, starting with Dominic Thompson. Dominic, thank you for being here. Question or comment?
Thank you, Distinguished Toastmaster Cononico. Good evening, all. It's a pleasure to be here on this platform with you. I have a concern for the members of the special needs community as it relates to the access to various T L I trainings as well as to the Toastmasters website overall. There is a concern that there, they are limited in being able to access certain areas of the Toastmasters portal and website. There has also been a challenge with respect to accessing the various rooms at T L I in the last session. And so it was indicated that we stress to the district that moving forward, please ensure that the links are individual as opposed to being combined or clustered to make it easier for them to access their various areas when they're doing their training. It was also suggested if it is that you're in the main room and you're aware that persons are supposed to be in particular rooms, if it is that they can just be slotted in specific rooms as opposed to trying to figure out where, how to click on to a specific link. Some persons are visually impaired or blind, and so it creates a challenge in some instances. That is my only issue to raise for this evening as a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Thompson. We greatly appreciate you bringing this up, and we value all of our members. The last thing that we would ever want is to make a member feel like they're ostracized or they're not part of an event because of something that limits them. First, speaking about the website, one hundred percent, we were, we will work on our website, having uh, any images, have screen readers. We want it to be as accessible as possible for anyone, especially with visual impairments. And we will make sure that the website is completely accessible for anyone with uh, any sort of needs for, especially for visual impairment. In addition, I would like to follow up with you directly about aspects of the Toastmasters International portal that are also giving members a trouble, because that is something that I am not aware of, and I would be happy within my position as district director to escalate that concern to our region advisor, perhaps even our international director. Because if we're experiencing in our district, members across the world are experiencing it too, and that's really important information. So I'll be sure to follow up with you about the toastmasters dot org website, which we don't have access to editing, to make sure that all of that is as accessible as possible. But our district website, toastmasters d four-seven dot org, I promise you, we we will work to make sure that that is as accessible as possible for all of our members. And I'd love to ask uh, for some of your support to making sure that that is done properly as well. So I'll be sure to follow up with you in that regard. Regarding the break, regarding, absolutely, regarding the breakout rooms for T L I, that is a really good point. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Any sort of event that we have that is going to involve multiple links, for example, for anyone to pop around, we are certainly not doing that to inhibit members from being able to freely access the content that they're looking for. So we will take that into account, making sure that every link is is as easy to access as possible. If you do need to jump over uh, links, but we will take that into account, and we will make sure that that doesn't happen again, where anyone is unable to access a portion of an event.
In addition to that, Dominic, if we end up having to have the one master link, we do it for timing. So if that becomes an issue, and you know of people that are having issues, we'll put that on the flyer if they need some special assistance. And as soon as we have those links, we will send it to them personally. So happy to accommodate them. We do it because we are looking to get the registration out as quickly as possible, and it's still while everything is still in process.
Also, Distinguished Toastmaster Margolin, if it's possible when we do the registration, if we can also include a question on the registration specifically asking if the person registering has a special need provision. So they are tied automatically.
Included in all remaining events. That's a really great point, and that's, that's definitely something that we'll include from now on. So thank you so much for uh, helping us improve our processes. We greatly appreciate it. That is an excellent idea. We will definitely do that for the immediate future. I see Christina Kilburg is her name, Distinguished Toastmaster Kilburg.
Yes, thank you very much again. Uh, I have been enjoying watching the new, it looks like, updated website. Thank you. It looks quite nice, and it looks like there actually is an area twenty-five director now. Is that person active, or when was that person appointed, or?
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Ignacio Segovia was appointed initially, but after our council meeting on the twenty-fourth of September resigned. That is a, an accident that it's still on the website. He, he will unfortunately be coming off, and there is a vacancy in in Division B Area Twenty-Five right now, so that uh, his, he should not be on there right now, and he will be removed immediately, yeah.
All right, so when there is a vacancy, who steps in to take the role of the area director? Would that be the division director, or who, who is gonna talk to us?
This is a great question, Distinguished Toastmaster Kilburg.
And you don't have to answer right now. I'm just bringing it up.
Thank you. No, this is a very good point. So Distinguished Toastmaster Frenchie Roy, the Division B Director, uh, and myself and the trio, we've been in conversations with him about this. Ultimately, the responsibility will lie on Distinguished Toastmaster Roy as the division director. But what we are going to do is divvy up those clubs to the existing area directors in Division B. That way, it's not all on one individual, so likely each club will have a different acting area director, so to speak, which is an existing area director. And the reports will ultimately be filled out by the division director, as Frenchie is the only one that actually has access to submitting their area director reports. Right now, we could replace the uh, the, the area B twenty-five director. Unfortunately, we've passed the point where an individual can get official dis- district leader credit for the role. Therefore, I understand that may be a stretch. However, if any former area director, distinguished Toastmaster, or anyone really wants to get the experience, would like to fill the role, they can still fill the role officially, and we'd love that, but I understand that it may be a tall ask considering the year of district leadership credit toward a distinguished Toastmaster award, for example, would not be uh, part of it, because we've passed the deadline of where the appointment uh, earns that official credit. So right now, Frenchie is the, the main point of contact for all of those clubs. And in the near future, we intend to have the other area directors within B take on one of those clubs each. And then that way, they could actually conduct the visits and ma- ensure that those clubs get the support that they need and deserve.
Great. Maybe we'll have our officers and Daxter too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I see Roxanne with her hand, and then we'll go to William, and then I have a few in the chat, which is great. So Roxanne.
Yes, thank you. My question concerns the club coaches. Yep, the club coaches can people who want to be club coaches, if we run out of clubs that need them in District Forty Seven, apply to be coaches in other districts and vice versa. Can we take club coaches from other districts to coach our clubs? And I also want to add, for the sake of everybody else, that since you're gonna get leadership credit for it, for those of you who never want to take on leadership roles, because you want to enter the international speech contest, here's an opportunity for you.
I like the plug there, Roxanne. So in general, um, this, this would be a perfect scenario if we ran out of clubs eligible for coaches and we didn't have anymore, and we had to go to other districts. However, unfortunately, there always seems to be at least one club that is in need of a coach or eligible for a coach, basically in every district. But certainly in in the recent uh, history, I've always seen at least a list of clubs that are still eligible for coaches really at any point during the year. Um, and if a member wanted to coach any of those clubs, we would just first need to see if the club is receptive of receiving a coach. And then we would work as a liaison at the district to make sure that that partnership between those coaches and that club is going to be a fit. And then we would follow the processes that Verna had described through the pathways system um, to basically follow up and make sure all the reports are submitted, et cetera. To the second part of your question, yes, you could also coach a club outside of the district, or we could have members outside of District Forty Seven, coach one of our clubs. But because I love our district so much, I would like to think that we would first try to prioritize supporting our clubs that need coaches and our members that are in needs of coaches. However, if we are out and about and looking to help, or for some reason, a member from another district really wants to help one of our clubs, again, as long as that pairing makes sense, the club is receptive of the coach, we're happy to receive the help and and the support. So yes, to both of your questions, but let's go District Forty Seven first, if we can.
Go District Forty Seven.
Thank you, Roxanne. I now recognize William. Thank you for being here. Comment or question?
You, Distinguished Toastmaster Austin. Uh, I just heard that you have an area director position, but I'm willing to help in any way I can. So I am willing to, even though I wouldn't get credit, to help with that, help Frenchie out with that, if that's okay with you.
Thank you so much for your willingness to help, William. We will definitely talk about how you can uh, support the division and B twenty-five. As we have talked about, we have a vacancy in that area, and we could use a lot of help. So thank you for the offer, and I will be sure to follow up with you after the town hall. So we'll, we'll be able to all talk.
All right.
Thank you.
The other question I have for you is one of the things that I, some people have told me about, uh, some people have asked me, are we going to have in-person T L I's? I've had twenty people ask me this. I've told them I'm not sure if we're going to, but I referred it to you or to um, Ms. Margolins.
Yeah, so thank you for the question, William. Yes, we are intending to have in-person Toastmasters Leadership Institutes. Right now, they are on the calendar in Southeast Florida for Saturday, November twelfth and Saturday, November nineteenth. I sent out an email on Thursday, October sixth, which includes a calendar. That calendar lists those T L I dates and the locations. More information will come out for a specific registration very soon. In that same correspondence that I had sent out, I also had an interest survey for in-person events, just to make sure that we weren't making any presumptions about the need or desire for in-person events. We've been hearing it, but we've also been hearing some say they love online, or that's what they're expecting. So we're making sure that we're serving all members of the district. So to answer your question, yes, we're planning on the in-person T L I's. I refer you back to the email that I sent on October sixth, which includes all of that information in detail, and that'll also be mirrored on our district website.
Okay, and where is that on the district website? Cause I did not see it.
It is, it is being updated. We have a calendar area. It will be listed there, and eventually you'll get it as a subscribable calendar that you can download. But for now, it was also in the email that was sent out as a one-page PDF for everyone to refer to.
Okay, thank you.
You, William. I recognize Distinguished Toastmaster Andrew Byrne. Thank you for being here, Andy.
Well, thank you. Uh, this was sandwiched in between two of the conference calls that I have at the same time, so it's been challenging. Uh, the question that I had was, if you sign up for a coach, in the past, it was like a deadline. You had to sign up and be appointed by December thirty-first, if you're gonna get credit in the year for the district credit as well. Is that still true?
Yes, and Verna, if you wanted to specifically reply to that, that is correct, though, Andy. If you wanted to just expand on that.
Andy, that while that is correct, I see we've had club coaches appointed after December, because bear in mind, when you've served as club growth director, that T I allows for, if a club coach is not successful in getting that club by June thirtieth, that club of coach appointment can be extended into the next Toastmasters year. A person appointed actually has two years that they can serve as a club coach. So even if their appointment is after December, so not making the six months, and club coaches have been appointed after December.
But for the official.
Was getting credit, district credit.
Yes. So it's a very specific stipulation now, Andy. In order to receive official credit as a district leader toward a distinguished Toastmaster award, you not only need to be appointed as a club coach prior to the end of the calendar year, so in the first six months of the Toastmasters year, but in addition to not only getting the club to being distinguished or higher, five distinguished club program goals or more, specifically, membership needs to be at charter strength of twenty or more. So even if that club was in an instance where they didn't need twenty, but they could have done plus five, or there's the interim program of plus three this year, um, in order to get official credit, you not, you would still be successful as a coach if they achieved that threshold. But if you don't also get the membership back up to twenty or more, you would not receive the official Toastma- the dis- district leader credit. So to summarize, yes, you could receive the credit. You need to be appointed in the office before December thirty-first. And by the end of the year, the club needs to be distinguished or higher with membership of or of twenty or more members. If all of those criteria are met, not only are you a successful club coach, but you will earn one year's worth of district leader credit that could be used toward a distinguished Toastmaster award. And that is something that, yes, thank you. It's a great question. That is something that they've used as an interim incentive, and now that is embedded into the club coach program now with those spe- with those specifications. So they've seen several questions in the chat. I'm sorry, Verna.
Sorry, I want to say, Andy, I put the, the links are in the chat for the new, to the directly to the club coach page that Toastmasters updated. And I want to, District Director, say something to, based on what your director Roxanne was asking. Roxanne, I just wanted to say to your directors, as well as club presidents. Toastmasters requires eight paid members for a club to be considered in good standing. So while there are a number of clubs paid and in good standing, those clubs have only eight members. If you have twelve or less members, you will be eligible to be on the list for club coaches. And I would also like to say in that regard that the portal is wide open. Membership payments can still be made. Don't think that, oh, I missed September thirtieth, so I have to wait until the next membership renewal payments comes in. I want to say something, and my P Q D and my district director. I want to say something and my P Q D and my district director can correct me if I wrong. What I was thinking about is, and I'm saying, we are a nonprofit organization, correct? When we pay our membership dues, our dues go to Toastmasters International. Toastmasters International returns, send some of that money back to us, District forty-seven. That is how we cover our expenses. That is how we have monies to get the little incentives and those things. So when we don't pay our, renew our membership, then that's less funds, that's going to Toastmasters International, meaning less funds. That's coming back to us to do what it is that we need to do to manage the affairs of the district. So I'm gonna encourage persons, please, like I said, the dues portal is still open. Persons can pay those dues that we didn't pay for the last dues period. We can pay early for the next, even though the next paid period isn't yet, we can start paying now. And I encourage persons, work with your treasurers, talk to your presidents, seven dollars and fifty cents a month. Let's put it aside and work towards having that done. And my last thing to say is do not wait until God willing, next year, April one. I have a peeve with Toastmasters International, they say, oh, you can pay your dues on April one, which is incorrect. Because the dashboard only reflects payments made up until September thirtieth. And so now what is gonna happen is some of your clubs that paid on October one, you didn't make your medley. Because why? You paid October one, you put those last two members in on October one. But you needed to get him in by September thirtieth in order to achieve that. So you have your D C P seven and eight, congratulations. But you didn't get that medley. So please, let's try to, when the next period comes up, February, March. Don't wait until April first. Get those in by March thirty-first or the thirtieth, because we all know the site goes down or it lags because so many people wait until the last minute. Our hashtag is let's grow District forty-seven, let's grow. Thank you, Mr. District Director.
Thank you, Verna. And Andy, I will recognize you in one moment, but I first wanted to quickly answer a question that I did see in the chat. We answered the first part of this question, how to become a club coach. The second part, is it open to all? This is a great question. As long as you are a paid member of a club in good standing and you are not part of the club you are looking to coach, or you were a member of that club within the past six months. That is a new stipulation. So if you were a former member of that club, but it's been over six months since you've been a member, you could technically coach that club. But if you're a member of a club, you cannot coach that exact same club. So yes, it's open as long as you're a paid member of a club in good standing and you are not a member of that club within the past six months, then you are eligible to coach that club. That was a great question. So Andy, recognize you once again.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have two questions. The first, uh, there is a stipulation this year that you couldn't be a coach in more than one club. Does that mean that you can't be a club coach in more than one district or not? They permitting you to be a club coach in, let's say, this district and then another district, you're also a club coach, or is that prohibited?
That is a great question, distinguished Toastmaster Byrne. I honestly do not know if you're restricted from that. So please let me get back to you on that. I'll directly contact you about that. I honestly don't know. And I don't want to venture, I don't want to even guess at it. So I, I'm not sure on that one, but I will follow up with you.
And then the second part of my question, uh, related in, in part to what Verna was saying, that if we encourage people to, you know, pay out their full year, two things happen. One, you don't have to mess with that April first, March thirty-first disaster. But two, the district gets uh, credited, but let's say a person got paid for the full year. The district gets essentially two-point credits for the uh, first six and the last six. And it goes to our favor in, in a special way. So I just wanted to mention that, that there's a benefit for encouraging everybody to do a full year's payment. A lot of people don't know how to do that, or if they paid up for this year, they don't know how to advance and do the second one. And if you get it all done before December thirty-first, then you can take your monies that are sort of complicated in your mind of how you deduct Toastmasters as a nonprofit and put it on your tax return, you can turn to Lois and other people that are CPAs uh, and explain to uh, the dumb ones in our group, including myself, that don't know taxes that well, how you get to write off the activities you're doing in Toastmasters, which if you belong to lots of clubs, lots of traveling and are going and doing a lot of things, that can wind up to be a lot of money. So just to mention that we have talent within our district that can help explain how you get to keep track of that and how it benefits you as well.
Thank you, distinguished Toastmaster Byrne, our past Club Growth Director. There's no doubt about that. That is a great way to make sure that our clubs are sustainable. It also ensures the area, the division, everything in the district is, is being supported as well. And a, a follow-up question was asking about the online payment system and thank you, Lois, for answering that question already. Eventually, part of the Toastmasters International website overhaul is going to include member self-pay. I, we've been told it was going to happen this Toastmasters year. It has not happened yet. When it does, it'll be a very exciting thing that we will all be learning about and accessing for the very first time. But in the future, Toastmasters will allow members to pay their own dues and even more improvements to the system there. But for now, we are still going to follow the exact same system that we've been in the past of collecting dues and paying them, uh, our treasurers paying them on behalf of our members. And by collecting dues for the entire year, definitely gives you an advantage. It also allows you to just enjoy your march without having to go through the dues collection process again. So it's definitely something that you wanted to consider. Our next question is regarding um, trophies, making trophies for a club. So the question is, at the end of October, my club will be conducting an award ceremony in celebration of the club's fifteenth anniversary. Wow, that is super, super cool. Can we use local trophies and plaques and what are the requirements for labeling? So in general, especially because the Toastmasters shop is down, you are permitted to use local trophies and plaques. However, if you're doing anything with the Toastmasters insignia, it needs to get approval by Toastmasters International. And in most instances, you're not permitted to actually have the logo branded onto a plaque or a trophy. You could, for example, have the plaque just say something about the club, et cetera. But as soon as you start using any of the Toastmasters International logo or brand, you would have to send it over to brand@toastmasters.org to verify if you can actually proceed forward with making anything produced. So the answer to that is yes, you can use a local shop for plaques and things like that. But if there's any question about using the Toastmasters logo, insignia, brand, please send your proofs or whatever you're looking to create over to brand@toastmasters.org. As long as they say yes, that's approved, then you can proceed forward knowing that you're doing the right thing with integrity. But obviously with the shop not open, many districts, clubs have been running into this exact issue where they're looking to do recognition, but they've had to seek alternative options because the shop was unavailable. The next question that I see, I do see your hand, William, we'll call on you, but we have several that have been waiting patiently in the chat that I want to get to. Is there a person who oversees verification and audit of clubs that may appear the number of educational credits being submitted may be questionable? The answer to that question would be the Vice President of Education of the club and including your secretary and president. This is an integrity thing. We go by the honor system of individuals submitting their awards and also the honor system of the club verifying and certifying those awards. So yes, every club has a verification and auditor in the Vice President of Education is one of their primary responsibilities, as well as the other base camp managers, your president, your secretary could also be great reinforcers of ensuring that every credit being submitted is legitimate. It is official and that member is receiving it. Not only that, the club is receiving it. So yes, that is, uh, it would be the club officers themselves would be overseeing that. Next question I see is, will you be establishing a group of pathways guides to assist clubs?
I'm gonna go ahead and take that. We do have a team of pathways guides or pathways chairs. And they have been going out to the various clubs and helping if you need special training or something like that. They do schedule that up. We are also going to be having another base camp training. But I will put in the chat how you can get in touch with them and they are happy to come out and work with your clubs. Or if you need some more handholding, they are happy to work with you because the district goal is to have two thousand levels completed and a four percent increase in the pathways adoption rate. So absolutely, we want to help you. If you need help, let us know and we will connect you up with those pathway guides so they can come out and help.
Thank you, Lois, and thank you who asked that question because again, when we learn the needs of your members and of your clubs, we want to deliver on that a hundred percent. William, I see your hand is raised.
Yes, Mr. President. To answer the question that you said about the supply orders, that's supposed to be up the third week of this month, cause I called T I on something else and they told me it should be up the third week of October.
Absolutely. And that mirrors what CEO Daniel Rex had put out in his letter to all members about a week and a half ago. So yes, thank you for mentioning that the shop should be open, which gives us more opportunities to purchase those recognition items. I see in the chat, Andy had also mentioned, uh, does, does each club need to put a process in place to collect club dues? That's a great question. Every club should have some formal process of how they go about collecting dues. And there are a number of ways that clubs can go about this. For clubs that are taking advantage of the free Toast Host website, there is a treasurer dues function that actually allows you to create an invoice, check off who's been submitting their dues and who hasn't. That way you could send out invoices to members and ignore those that have already paid. If you're not using that website, no worries. There are a number of different ways that uh, clubs could be organized in the collection of their dues, whether or whether or not they have a club bank account. So in general, yes, clubs should have a process in place for collecting dues and that's great subject material for a treasurer training, for example, of our club officer training. So if you're in a club right now and you're not really sure what the club's dues collection process is, it's a great time to revisit that as an executive committee, as officers of a club and to talk about that together. But we highly encourage every club to have a real plan in place for the dues collection process. That way you stay in good standing. You don't have any members that are lapsed, memberships that are lapsed and we can keep as many of our members happy and, and um, active as possible. So great question. Okay, seeing questions in the chat. If a Toastmaster presents speeches in several clubs, how would that be verified? Also outside of the club speeches. That is a great question, Ramon. This is again, an honor system type of deal. Um, if a member before pathways was going around physically bringing a manual around to get signed off, obviously there would need to be some form of an honor system in there that they did in fact, visit that club, give that speech and receive official verification from another uh, member of that club. So right now it is an integrity thing. That is why integrity is our number one core value. Uh, in which case we do want to go off of the honest word of a member. But that is what the Vice President of Education of every club should be knowing the plan of their members. For example, if I'm a Vice President of Education of a club and I know that I have a member that's very active going to other clubs, it would be easy for me to verify that that activity is actually taking place. And if a Vice President of Education has any uh, concern that maybe that is not legitimate information, they would have every right to vet that member to try to verify, were they at that club, do they need to? So if some investigation needs to take place, it should. However, I'd like to think that in this organization, integrity, respect, service and excellence, we don't have anyone fabricating educational awards and submitting fake goals uh, for credit and then also for club credit. Therefore, uh, it's an honor system thing and every club needs to make sure that they're working with their members. They understand their educational goals. And if we do have members submitting goals from other clubs, we are in some way verifying that, not just taking everyone's word for it. But we definitely have to go by integrity, number one in Toastmasters. What call, what qualifies for outside of a club speech? Literally any speech given outside of a club. So it could literally be any speaking arrangement. Typically, there needs to be an actual audience. It's not just you speaking to an empty room or recording a video with no audience. Uh, typically it would be taking place in some sort of a public speaking fashion. And the way it has always been is that you can get credit for speeches outside of the club, but you should be getting an actual paid Toastmaster to observe the speech and to provide you with an evaluation. Uh, whether it's spoken or written, you shouldn't just be giving speeches and getting no feedback. The feedback component is a really essential part of completing the loop of delivering a speech for official credit. Therefore, if you are delivering speeches outside of your club or outside of Toastmasters, you really need that evaluation to kind of signify you gave the speech and there's the proof of it, so to speak. But it's another integrity item, a hundred percent. One other comment that I had from distinguished Toastmaster Betsy Robinson, and this is in relation to the club coach program. Thank you for this addition as well. One of the new stipulations is that you actually have accomplished levels one and two in pathways already and before becoming a club coach. So in order to being a paid member in good standing, you have had to have at least submitted levels one and two in any path within pathways prior to becoming a coach. Thank you for mentioning that, Betsy. That's one of those new stipulations that I forgot to mention. The other question, could Vice President of Education sign something with date to verify? Absolutely. Every club does things slightly differently. My club still prints the evaluation forms out for every speech that they give. Every member at the end of their speech has a, the physical documentation of somebody evaluating it. Uh, that, that's a good rule of thumb. All of the evaluation resources are digital as well. Therefore, anyone could fill out the PDF digital electronic form of the evaluation. Uh, but basically every speech, every Toastmaster should be giving, we, we should be utilizing that evaluation resource tool. And that is typically what is used to verify whether or not a member is doing their, doing their speeches for credit. You could also, within pathways, upload evaluations. You could scan or upload documents. So if a club wants to be really strict on that process, your club, for example, could implement an internal procedure where everyone has to upload their evaluation form for every speech they give. And that could also be verified by a secretary, president or vice president education. However, the upload of the evaluation resource is not in any way a requirement in pathways. So if your club internally wanted to have an extra layer of verification, that would be wonderful. But again, this is ultimately going to come down to integrity and being honest. We are past the second half of the hour, so we're over an hour on this town hall, but this has been absolutely wonderful. Uh, this would be the proverbial last call for comments and questions. Otherwise, I could literally see us being here all night. So I see Roxanne has her hand raised. Please, anyone else with a question, comment, raise your virtual hand or post in the chat now. And at the conclusion of all the questions on their volition, we will wrap up the session. So Roxanne.
It's just killing me that right as you say, last call. Okay, whatever. But that issue, I mean that, you know, that last person again, the issue of a club making it a requirement at the club level. You all, please remember that your V P Es, your presidents, all those people cannot make those decisions unilaterally. And it has to be voted on and agreed to by the members.
Thank you, Roxanne. I see Lois, you have your hand up?
I do. I just want to mention that your P Q D team is really working hard on providing you uh, different types of programs. And if you have ideas of what you would like to see in these programs that you don't see or what you would like to see at T L I, certain type of sessions and so forth, just drop us a note. You could do it to T L I at toastmastersd47.org. But it really does help if we've got your input and know some of these programs that you want. And you know what? Sometimes just say thank you. That's all you need to do. So appreciate you all being here tonight.
Likewise, I share that sentiment. And we, I, I'll see your hand raised, William. I also saw distinguished Toastmaster Kathy, you had a great comment. Integrity is ideal, but mistakes can happen. So I would like to suggest that Toastmasters International links Club Central to Pathways so that only completed levels appear in Club Central and be available for credit. That is an excellent point. And one of the aspects of the enterprise resource planning process that Toastmasters International is implementing to the overall Toastmasters International website, that is part of what we have been told as district leaders is going to be a part of the process. So they are in every way planning to link together the achievement of a, a level in pathways, directly tethering it to Leadership Central where the award is actually submitted. So right now it is still the two-part process like it always has been. But now in the future, they're going to make it so that when a member completes a level in pathways and it's been verified, that is also automatically going to link to that club's award and it's not going to be a two-part process. When exactly that's going to happen, I don't know, but I guarantee you that will be a big piece of news that comes out and is broadcasted by Toastmasters International. And it is something that we will echo as well as a district. So great point. They're working on it and I certainly hope that it's going to be implemented as soon as possible. Cause that's, we've been hearing that uh, basically since Pathways, it was unrolled, that that was very confusing. And I understand a hundred percent how that could be confusing. William, your hand is raised?
Yes, Mr. District Director. I had a question for you. What has been your challenge as District Director and also Toastmaster Lois? What has been your challenge as Program Quality Director and Toastmaster Bonham? What's been your challenge as Club Growth Director?
William, what a great question. I'd like to say there are no challenges. Everything's going smooth sailing, but of course, that's not the way life works. I'd like to just say that uh, in general, in Toastmasters, so many of us take on roles that we have, we've never done. I'd like to just say that in general, in Toastmasters, so many of us take on roles that we have, we've never done before and we have no experience doing before. And we do it for 12 months and then we move on to something else that we've never done before directly. So I would say that just in general, it's being, making sure for myself personally, it's just making sure that I'm doing everything I possibly can for the members of the district. And this town hall, one of the big parts of it is we've been hearing a lot from members, but we wanted to really face the district as much as possible. I certainly didn't want to make it seem in any way like I was hiding from feedback because I love the feedback that we get in Toastmasters. So really my biggest challenge so far has just been making sure that I am making sure we're delivering for the members of the district. But it's something that I'm confident that we're making improvements about every day. So I'd say that's the big and the biggest challenge, but I like to think of it as the biggest opportunity for growth and for development. So thanks for the opportunity to answer that question, but I'm having fun in this process as well. Lois, Verna?
Thank you, William. I appreciate the question. Challenges come at you every day. I will say that. But I think my biggest challenge has been thinking outside the box and coming up with ways to engage the membership. That might be a little bit different because I think that that's what keeps it fresh and alive. And so our team of 11 have really been working hard to think of things that are unique and different that would excite you and also benefit our membership. And so from that point, we've been listening. We get requests for certain sessions and we evaluate whether or not those sessions are going to work for everyone. And it's overall, I love all the emails that you send me. So many of you have sent emails and suggestions with questions, with ideas. And the challenge, I think, is just keeping up with everything because there's a lot going on in this district. But I appreciate it and I appreciate the opportunity to work with the membership. I think that I am this incredible working process and I see myself growing by leaps and bounds. So thank you for asking that.
Thank you for that question. Challenge, challenge, challenge. I wouldn't call it a challenge, but if I had to say anything, I am looking at this as a teachable moment, an opportunity for me being here in the Bahamas, an opportunity to learn more about District 47, about my Florida family and how to make things work, that middle ground. This will work in the Bahamas. This will work in Florida. Let's bring it together so that we encourage everybody to take part. And it's just the members and letting them know, we are here for you all year round. It's not just about the membership payment, you know, although they are pretty important. But we want to know, how are you doing? We want to celebrate you. We want to hear, when you had a new grandbaby? You want to hear you finally got that degree that you've been doing part-time. We want to celebrate you. We want to celebrate with you. So this is an opportunity, being able to interact with more persons. And I like to say, this is the only, well, I wouldn't say only, but one of the thing I would call good things that came out of this COVID-19 pandemic. And as having to embrace this virtual reality, I would not have had the opportunity to interact with so many of my fellow Toastmasters in Southeast Florida. And so William, I am looking forward, it's, it's not a challenge, it's teachable moments, learning opportunities. And that's what it is. And thank you all so very much for all of the support and the encouragement that you give. Thank you.
Toastmaster Bonham, if I could be any help to you anyway, please call for me.
I will do so. Thank you so much, William.
I feel the love in the air. Thank you so much, everyone. We will definitely put on another one of these town hall meetings. The trio will get together on thinking of another time on the calendar date that makes sense for everybody. But honestly, we really thank you for participating, for being active and engaged. Each of you are essential to your club and clubs. And that's really what makes everything go around for us. It, it's really wonderful to see the engagement and to see the commitment and the commitment to the core values of Toastmasters, of integrity, respect, service and excellence. It's, it's exuded in District 47 each and every day. So on behalf of the trio, our Program Quality Director, Distinguished Toastmaster Lois Margolin, our Club Growth Director, Distinguished Toastmaster Verna Bonnaby, our District 47 Administration Manager, Distinguished Toastmaster Ernesto G. Williams, I am your District Director, Distinguished Toastmaster Austin Canonica. We will officially be signing off on this town hall meeting. And I promise you that this video will be available in our Facebook group and on our YouTube channel. So anyone that was not able to attend, this content will be visible for them all. But we thank you again for attending and we look forward to our next town hall meeting. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you and good night, everyone.
Good night, good night, good night.
Good night. Thank you to the trio.
Good to see everyone.
Thank you to the members.
Yes.
Good night. Thank you for this meeting. It was awesome.
Good night. Thank you. And I'll follow up with you about your triple crown.
Oh, Nancy has her triple crown in District 47. I looked it up.
Wonderful. Perfect. Thank you so much. I had a feeling.
Thanks.
Congratulations, Nancy.
Thank you, Lois.
Okay. Good night, everyone.